Into order, it's eight oh two. And let's first make sure we have a quorum Jim Bell, I see you, Michael Chen, I see you, Paul Foley, I see you. Amy, I see you. Is Penny here yet?
Yes.
All right, Penny. Michael Morrow.
And I'm not gonna give feedback.
On anyone's screen, do you see Michael? All right, I don't see Michael yet. And Paul Foley, there he is. Wait, that was Paul Foley. Anyone, does anyone see Paul Foley on their screen? All right. Well, we do have a quorum. I'm here. So other people in attendance, Stuart, I know you're here. Leon here, John D. Federico here, Andrew Walsh here, Kevin Monahan here. Let's see. Who else? Okay, Penny's here. Who else is, who else is on the call?
Joe Zagremski.
Joe?
And Tiger Man.
Brian is on the call too, Bill.
Yeah, Brian Humes, yep, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you.
And Gil.
We also, we have Lawrence Keenan and Robert D. Elagrange from Hoffman Architects attending as well.
Thank you, guys. Looking forward to the report. All right, let's, let's move on. Were there any public comments that came in, Joe?
There was none.
The approval of the meeting minutes from December ninth seems like a long time ago, doesn't it? Has everyone had a chance to, did everyone receive them? Have a chance to look at them?
Yeah, we did.
All right.
Vote for approval.
Second?
Yes, Foley.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Well, a lot has happened in the last, in the last few months. A couple of things I want to bring forward. I believe it's extremely likely that the current police building site will not change, that the new police station, whatever form that takes, will, will be built on the existing site. You know, I realize the building committee was not involved with an alternative site selection, but first thing we should do is thank those that were. It was, they put in a Herculean task to try to find another solution to the issue of where to put our police station and a special hat off to Stuart. And all those that work with Stuart trying to find an alternative location to build a police station. So guys, job well done. But it does look like the, when you come through it all, it's going to be on the, on the existing site. But that's the first thing I wanted to break forward.
Hey, Bill, let me address that.
Yep. Go ahead, Kevin.
So when you said likely, so we've, the town leaders have decided that there's not an appetite to pursue an alternative location. We have had bona fide offers to purchase South Avenue and substantial offers for multifamily housing, but obviously, the current location works. And the important thing is, based upon the Hoffman report, that the building is suitable for renovation and a building, building essentially a new building within it, within the current building. So so the decision really has been made, we're not going to pursue an alternative location.
Thank you, Kevin. The second thing I'd like to update people on. You know, the good news is I haven't met anyone in town that doesn't support provided police with a, you know, a top notch training center and which includes a shooting range. We don't yet know where that will happen, but it is not likely to be part of the solution for a new police or rebuilt police station on the, on the current site. You know, in essence, just because we might be able to put it in back there, doesn't mean we should put it in back there. And let's face it, at its core, it's a, it's a shooting range in a residential neighborhood. Within a, within a, within a sand wedge, we have senior living, daycare, and a home for, for especially young adults. Well, maybe for Kevin, it's a seven iron, but for me, it's a sandwich. And you know, it's really a lot to ask for, you know, to get something like that approved. And I think that it could be a sinkhole for time. And so we are, as a town, we're still looking for alternative solutions for a shooting range. I think it's something that, what we talk about, other things on the agenda, you know, next steps, we can go into those in a little more detail. There are a lot of, there are a few balls moving forward there. But from a building committee perspective, I believe it makes a lot of sense to remove the, and not just me, but you know, others at the time, believe it's, makes good sense to remove the trading center from the plan. Whenever the bottom plan is approved for that, for the, for the current location.
But Bill, I would like, this is Paul Foley, I would like to have it as part of the parallel discussion.
Absolutely.
Because my fear, my fear is it will get lost, it will get dropped, and we'll focus just on renovating the building. And then, oh, we'll get back to that training center eventually. In the meantime, you know, five or 10 years will go by and we'll have no training center. So that's, that's my concern.
Oh, I think that's a very, I think that's a very real concern, and I think it's one shared, I won't speak for the whole committee, but I think it is one shared by the committee. And I think there's a couple of ways to deal with that. You know, from a dollar perspective, one is to keep the dollars for a trading center in the plan numbers, so that people understand that conceptually, the town has money set aside, conceptually, for a police training center, because you're absolutely right, out of sight, out of mind, and we can't let that happen, in my, in my opinion. And so, does anyone else want to chime in on that?
I, I agree with that. I think that if we take, we're the police building committee, if we just take it off our table completely, that it could, it could get dropped. And so that we ought to either find an alternate location in town, or hopefully the, the multi-community one might be able to go forward.
This is Mike. It's from the town council's perspective. I can tell you that, you know, we're always looking at what things are going to cost in the future, right? So there's a lot of pressure right now to, you know, with these capital projects. And we had quite a discussion last night about certain capital projects, in my opinion, should be prioritized on a lower level. But in any event, the point is, is that, hold on one second. The garbage truck just pulled in and he creeped out. You know, there's certainly a compelling need to push things along now because of bonding and, you know, bonding and interest rates. So I do share, you know, my colleagues' concern here. If we don't move forward parallel with this training center now, it will get lost, it will be far more expensive in the future. You know, I know there could be a counter argument to be made that, well, you know, okay, so this is another huge project, and let's just focus on the police building. I can tell you that argument will certainly creep into this discussion moving forward. And I think we really need to resist that. This, in my opinion, I wish the range could stay in there, whatever it's not going to, like, that's fine. But let's not lose sight of that. This has to get done, it needs to get done, and go, pushing this off to the side, I don't think there'd be an appetite for on town council to, you know, accept that it be pushed off to the side and not, but really thinking about the dollars that need to be allocated towards that project.
Thank you, Michael.
Great, thank, thank you. As we discussed the other day, and Paul, we would like to have a parallel process going with Leon and John and Andrew. And so that by May or June, we have a report on, because West Coast has a very robust plan for a regional center. We probably are not going to want to participate in a, in a center that has seven or eight agencies. And on the other hand, Wilton still is looking for a partner. And we, you know, we've had discussions about locations in town that would be more remote than residential neighborhoods. So.
Right. As people remember, yeah, at the, at the joint meeting, Lappam Road site was right up the flagpole. Certainly, the discussions are going on with, with neighboring towns, and there are a lot of balls moving forward. We didn't put the, you know, talk of a trading center on the agenda. It's, it's, this is a special meeting. We can't talk, you know, too, too much about it, but I think the reality is there are a lot of balls moving forward. I think we're all in agreement, we don't want this thing to be, to be lost in the process. We want it to be forefront. And people are very committed to this. That's the good, like I said, the good news is it's, there's complete support for this. And so it's just a question of, of where. So we want to keep it part of the, part of the discussion going forward.
All right, thank you.
Yep. All right. Item five, presentation by Hoffman Architects. Thank you, guys, for, for being here today. I think we, we sent the report out to everyone, everyone, everyone to get the report. And we'll give the, we'll give the Zoom meeting over to you guys right now.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just gonna kind of introduce ourselves. My name is Kieran Pino, or Gil for short. I'm a senior project coordinator. We have Lawrence Keenan. He is a senior vice president and director of architecture and engineering at Hoffman. And we have Bob T. Elagrange, our senior business development management. So I'm going to start off just by going through our report with a low level kind of our findings. And so I'll start off with the scope of services, observations, evaluations, and then the recommendations. And then from there, if anyone has any questions, we'll gladly answer them for you. So starting off with our scope of services, so the main, the main scope of services was a visual assessment of the brick facades, low slope roofs, foundation, and to provide scope of recommendations, repair work, including budgetary cost estimates. And there was also an option in there for us to provide you with a recommendation for water repellent to apply for, to the brick masonry. So observation, so starting off with the brick facades in the main building and the front of the building. So that would be the western north sides of the building. The overall condition of the brickwork on the front of the sides is actually pretty good condition. There were minor spalls and cracks throughout. The brick had little, to no apparent weathering and decoloration? No. Sorry, I'm kind of, I have some notes, I'm kind of reviewing them at the same time. Okay. Mortar joints are weathered, but not eroded, no cracking, de-bonding were observed. Cast stones, water table at the base of the building had deterioration. Head joints and no minor spalls were viewed. Some projected cast stone elements on the building were missing. A drip edge, this included jack arches and over the windows. The back arches over the windows and water table. So for the back of the building, the back of the building, as you guys know, is, is painted. And, and at these painted location, the coating is causing pretty substantial deterioration of the block is causing spalling and surface erosion. In the 1980s, the front of the windows of the lower level of the main building removed and open, and were open enclosed with, and the openings were enclosed with CMU. From the inside at the basement, you can see FRS in water staining. That occurred from water coming in from the outside, from just above the foundation wall. On March 18th, we, we did an excavation at the foundation, and we found that the existing waterproofing and damp proofing that is there is no longer providing any waterproofing. And it's de-bonding from the foundation. So to the, to the back of the building, looking at the low slope roofs, the two low slope roofs, there, there's the, the main low slope roof that's attached to the main building, and then there's the other one that's part of the garages. That was an addition at some point back in the 80s. Now, the, the condition of the EPM roofs is in overall good condition. The, the bigger of the two roofs, there are four skylights that are made of polycar, polycarbonate. These are aged in yellow. There is also some, some minor things going on in the roof. For instance, there are two vent stacks on the roof that are not to, to industry standard heights. And there's also a, there's a penetration from heat pumps that has not been flashed, and that can, that can be allowing water to enter. Although, and so windows was not part of our scope, but I did observe a window on the south facade that had, was very evident that there was fogging, and it was no longer providing any insulated, any insulation. So typically, they're, they're filled with inert gas. And when that expels from the window, leaves it foggy, and you can, you can see that. So it's pretty evident. So I just wanted to point that out. There is also railings on the north and south and at the main entry that needed to be repaired there. Either not to code, they're rusting, the slabs that they, they sat on are cracked and not being supported well. So need to be taken care of. Evaluations. So going back to the brick, the main brick facade, the condition of the brick facades in the building varies by location. The unprinted brick masonry is in good condition and shows little to no visible signs of deterioration or erosion. So that's on the northwest and south facade. To the back, the rear of the building, painted portion had previous, been re repaired with large areas of brick replaced with, replacing the window lintels. And then, as we discussed, the miscellaneous things, the railings need to be up to ADA code compliance. And, and the concrete that, that's supporting has stalled and cracked. A, and also, so at the water tables, drip edges were missing. And like I mentioned, the, the fogginess of the window. Then going back to the low slope roofs, we recommend a new skylights to be installed, the new, and new skylight curves. So though the existing skylights there, they're not, also they're not to, to proper height, so those would should get lifted to, so typically, the minimum height for that is eight inches, and then also the vent stacks. And then for the foundation. Oh, okay. So for the foundation, we recommend, like, I kind of, geez, I skipped ahead and went into recommendations. Sorry about that. Give me one second here. Foundations. Okay, excavation of the foundation revealed that the masonry at the wall extended below the grade and is unprotected with moisture mitigation, while remediation of the previous damp proofing and flashing effort were observed. These items are deficient and ineffective, and they do not extend to above the grade. Okay, so to recommendations. So for the brick facade, we recommend cleaning the masonry facades with a light duty masonry detergent. Replacing in damage or deteriorated mason, masonry that would be cracked bonded. A de-bonded mortar joint should be cut and repointed. Remove and replace coating, and that's on the back of the building, the paint. And applied a high, highly breathable masonry coating. And then some penetration sealant throughout and miscellaneous things. Then going back to the railings, making them ADA compliant, adding those drip edges to the water tables, replacing that, that foggy window. Adding the new skylights. Getting the vent stacks to that eight inch or to 24 inches for the vent stacks, and then eight inch curves for the skylights. And then for the foundation, a comprehensive waterproof system, which includes a drainage board, waterproof membrane, new footing drains, gravel, and geotextile fabric.
Can I ask you a question about the ceiling, the lower level of the brick that you were just discussing? So you would excavate out, seal it all, and then put the soil back against it? Is that how it would work?
Well, yeah, we would add also some gravel and some, some geotextile fabric to also help with the water mitig, mitigation.
Right. And that's, I just want to make sure we're really confident that, that will 100% solve the moisture issue in the lower level. Because if it's, you're going to put the gravel down and seal it, and then it's going to be, if I understand it correctly, you know, kind of back to how it looks right now. So that, you know, is the materials that we're talking about using, have they demonstrated their ability to stop water penetration in perpetuity? Because obviously, when they did it the first time, they tried to do it that way. It wasn't like someone didn't try to make sure it was waterproof.
If I might.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry. The existing waterproofing was poor by today's standards. It, I mean, perhaps most importantly, it didn't come all the way to the surface. So you always get a rising damp situation, what the brick will. Anytime brick goes below the, the soil level, it's very absorbent. Going to, you're going to be sucking moisture in from, from the surface level. The, the foundations themselves, there's no reason why it can't be waterproof. It didn't look like there was damage to the, the concrete foundations below. So once, we're fairly confident that, you know, we can stop moisture from coming through the soil to the interior. Whether or not it comes from above, that's another, that's a whole different scenario, because you have a, a wall that goes down below grade. So moisture can still be coming in from above, but that's not what we saw. It was coming right through the foundation, which should be fairly easy to, to mitigate. The, the one question is whether or not we can provide subsurface drainage. If you were to, once we waterproof it, you still have water potentially sitting against the foundation. There's waterproofing membranes that are fairly, you know, robust, but for a long-term solution, it's always best to drain that surface as well. And that really depends on whether or not you could actually send a pipe or if there's a place to daylight or discharge a collection pipe. So that's the part that we, we weren't really hired to look into, so we don't really know. But even then, that, we'll, we'll say that would be the belt and suspenders of the, of the situation. The waterproofing itself is pretty straightforward and should be fairly successful.
And that's something that you're familiar with other brick buildings that have below grade brick. That it's, it's worked in many other applications.
Oh, I mean, this is.
I make sure, yeah. So we don't want to get, we don't want to do all this and get back to the same situation.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a common repair.
Okay.
Practically all old buildings usually had brick, or I wouldn't say all, but a lot of them went down below grade, and you always get that rising damp appearance right above grade, say three to four feet, salts get sucked up into the wall, and, and they end up spalling the wall and leaving discoloration. So that's a pretty fairly common repair to, 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 you know, instigate. So.
What's the lifespan of something such as this with, with a proper membrane? And let's assume we can put pipes that go to daylight. What would be your lifespan on a solution such as that?
Well, I, I don't think there would be a real deteriorating mechanism based upon the current standard of materials, the materials we have right now. I am perhaps in perpetuity. I think the big danger would be excavations adjacent to the foundation. Having that damaged or the, the real fear would be a crack in the foundation occurs, and it rips through your waterproofing. I mean, that's, even then, the materials today are much more elastic and better than, than they have been.
Great.
Okay. Is that like a 10-year solution, a 20-year solution, 30-year solution? If we do it the right, proper way?
Do it the proper way. If I had to put a number on it, we'd say 50 years, but you, you might, it'll probably last 100. Done properly. I mean, it's not exposed to, the, the areas that would be really at, that would be subject to degradation, would really be at the surface. Anything exposed to sunlight, certainly. Anything exposed to shovels from plantings, I mean, that's really where your, your degradation is going to happen. Anything below grade is fairly well protected.
All right. And then I guess the next question, I guess we shouldn't put any plantings like right against it, right, with roots and vegetation.
I wouldn't say that either, because we, we can, well, the, the membranes would, would come to the surface, but you wouldn't want to expose them to, to UV, so you would want to protect it with something in any case. And we would probably cut it, reglet right above soil and bring a metal flashing up and tuck it in, and that metal flashing could go down further, and, you know. I will say somebody with a shovel that doesn't know what they're doing can't do damage to that, but, you know, there's things you could do to protect it.
Okay, thanks.
It's a, it's a good opportunity to add insulation to the foundation as well. And certainly, somebody with a shovel would, once they hit the insulation, would, would probably, you know, at least you would think they would hope, hopefully back off of, of damage in the insulation. You would think.
May I ask a follow-on question, not quite related to the foundation, but to the paint in the back of the building? The, both the, let's see, it'd be the east side of the building, the red, original red brick building was painted, and then the annex was also painted. What would be the, the cause for someone, the town, to paint the, the, those surfaces? What, what would be the motivating force, you know, by chance?
Um, well, in my experience, it's usually that somebody is trying to hide or say, fix a condition. I mean, there's, there's never really a good reason to paint brick, just in general. It's, it's very, it's detrimental to brick, unless you want to do it to, just because you want to paint your building, you know, aesthetics. But here, we're talking about the back of the building. I will assume that is not the, the reason. I think the, the real glaring thing for me is that there was, it looks like lintel work done right above the windows. You could see somebody came through and replaced, well, why, some flashing above the windows. If I had a guess, they were probably trying to stop a leak by just painting the, the, the brick and stopping moisture from, from getting absorbed through, which came down to lintels. But as, as we said, that's, that's usually not a, an advisable corrective action. So they were forced to come back and do that anyway. So.
So, so the question, you know, would be only a concern for all of us, which would be i- if we in fact remove the paint, would we perhaps, or is it possible, or is it considered, considered a possibility that we end up exposing a problem that right now is hidden behind the paint, or, or is that less likely?
It seems unlikely, just because paint doesn't really hide problems very well. And in my experience, paint is more likely to cause problems and exacerbate problems. So I, I would, I'd be doubtful. It's also fairly transparent. I mean, if there are big spalls, you would be able to sight down the, the side of the building and, and see them. So my guess is it probably, probably not. The, the bigger problem is once you paint a, a brick facade, you're, you're more or less stuck with a painted brick facade, because it's very difficult to get the paint off of that surface. It's, it's got a lot of joints and cracks and porous structure. So my, my, my bigger fear is the fact that we have to recode it again. And then there's materials that, even that science has, has blossomed over the years. There's quite a few things that we can choose from that are appropriate. But in the end, we're just not fans of painting brick if you don't have to, on the exterior of the building.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Can the paint be removed with a sort of a sand blasting technique that I was involved with in a previous building? Where we came through and it was a very fine sand, and it actually cleaned it up really nicely. And then we just repointed the brick.
That, there are methods. I would suggest, and really, this comes down to the type of brick and the condition of the brick. And really, the, the skill of the operator, because you, you could specify something, you know, perfectly well, and somebody lays on a, you know, sand blaster can, can write their name in the wall if they want to. So. Yeah. So it really comes down to. Yeah, so it really comes down to the the means and methods. And we recommend a mock-up be performed. That being said, there's there's things that we could do. You can soften the uh the material chemically, try to strip it. But stripping on brick is always, you know, fa- somewhat folly, just because it's a very absorbent material. You have to use something mild. You don't wanna put acid into the into the facade. Um, but you you wanna do something to soften it, try to get it off as much as possible. And then the blasting technique, there's quite a few things that you can blast with that are not uh what you would call hi- uh high high-modulus abrasives like sand. We've recommended something called sponge jet. Sponge jet actually is is a a material that's very delicate. It's actually ground-up sponge, sponge that's made with a uh an aggregate uh embedded within it. And then they grind it up into a a friable, um not not really a dust, but uh it's tiny little sponges that, you know, hit the surface. Um, gently grab the material and bounce off. Uh, so something like that is possible. You can really even sandblast with, or say abrasive blast with um dry ice. I mean, that's that's kind of an extreme um example, but there there are techniques that are more delicate. But once again, we're we're, our recommendation is not to perfectly clean the surface, because that's just unnecessary. And you will end up damaging it. We'd like to take off most of the paint to open up the surface. So say to a ninety, ninety-five percent removal, um just to allow the the brick to breathe and the new coating to adhere. Um, so hopefully that answered your question.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, Bill, one last quick question. The 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 original building, which of course was an old school. And uh what the backside, the east side was painted, but then the annex was also painted. Did you notice any difference between the annex brick versus the painted brick on the east side of the original building? Or were they more or less the same condition?
Um, so the, we're kind of annexed, uh it it's constructed differently. So uh we we're under the assumption that it's a a brick veneer. Um, I, we couldn't tell what the condition of the brick was, cause that is also painted. Um, so that would require some removal of the paint to really understand if it is similar to the the rest of the building.
Okay, but you you think it is a brick veneer, the the annex is a brick veneer, not a a solid brick wall?
Yeah, uh it it should be. So so the interior side is um CMU. And then uh it's a substantially thick wall, if you look at the door jam. So yes, we're under the impression it's a brick veneer with a possibly a cavity.
Yeah, I I should point out, it doesn't, based upon its age, that would that would seem logical. Uh, the part that really gives us pause is there's no other indications that it was built per, we'll say, more modern standards. There's no weeples, there's no visible flashings, things of that nature. So um we're not, we're not sure, I mean, it really meets either definition, um as they're properly known. Uh, but Gil's probably right. I mean, it's it's probably a some type of veneer. It's just uh doesn't look like it was, it was properly drained if it was.
Ryan, did you have a question, Brian?
Yeah, I can add some insight into the garage. I think that's the annex you're talking about, Stuart, was the garage addition that was put on?
No, no, well, the the garage addition was is basically new. I'm no, I'm talking about the the whole backside of the building.
Okay. I'll give you some more information about the garage that was put on. The garage, we we installed and and designed the garage. And that's actually not brick uh veneer. That's what they call brick block. Uh, it's a CMU product that resembles brick, but it it's a veneer. It does have cavity wall behind it. It does have weeples, but the product that's there was a brick block to resemble brick, but it's not a clay product. It's a concrete product that's on the garage. And the sealer that we put on there was a breathable product. It was not a paint product. So you see a difference on how the the two are performing uh when you put a breathable sealer versus a paint. So I just thought I'd add that.
I I I will add that that one, we did notice was far different. Uh, it did have weeps. It was built per, it was, it was obviously, you know, performing very well. Um, uh it was, it has weeps, it has uh flashings, um it's in good condition. So, yeah, we'll we'll agree that that's that's, it's a separate animal.
So, so would it with regards to not not the garage, but the rest of the annexed? Would it with to bring in the weeps and the lentils and all the other things that you're talking about, lentils? Um, is this something that can be retrofitted back to the building uh with some ease? Or is it become a fairly expensive endeavor?
I think we would have to do some probes to to uh know more, to let you to answer that question. Um, if it's causing problems, then certainly that's that's required, and that's the next step. Uh, we didn't see, usually you see problems immediately at lentils above windows. So I mean, you see it on the on on the uh back facade of the the main building. Uh, water comes down through the facade, it hits that obstruction and finds its way into the building, and that's where people notice it. So that's the most common repair. And I don't recall seeing anything specific at that those locations. Gil, did did you say anything there?
No, uh not that I can point, um although for the front of the building, that the water table that exists at the base and also over the the jack arches, uh there there is missing a drip there. So uh we did.
That's not on the annex, so it's on the the main building.
Yeah, on the main building, yeah.
I have two questions. One, for Tiger and Joe, if there was anything in the report that gives you uh pause for concern going forward. And two, uh having to do with uh long-term maintenance of uh, you know, implementing your recommendations to me. If we do refurbishes new, that um going forward, uh the things you're asking us to do are are eas- are easy to do and and are uh, you know, for our community in a town to uh uh to make sure that they stay up on the maintenance for for the envelope of the building.
Yeah, so I was, I was out on site when we dug the test holes uh alongside the building and the existing building, which was the major point of concern for basically everyone. Um, and it was truly a smoking gun that um the waterproofing membrane had failed. It was too high, it was graded to the building. There was just a lot of easy um indicators of of why it was leaking inside. So that made me feel much more comfortable about that section of the building. As Hoffman has mentioned, that the building is very serviceable. Um, these don't, these things don't seem um out of the ordinary to add some additional flashing and and some current day best best practices to get water out of the building. Um, so that doesn't, um, that doesn't surprise me. And as they mentioned, they they'd have to take a deeper dive in order to fully, you know, they haven't been brought on board to fully design the solution. But all their concepts seem right in line with I've, with what I've done historically. Um, as far as long, long-term, it, long-term, it it sounds like we're it probably gonna be recommended not to seal the entire building. So that was one thing that with the committee was concerned about. Was sealing the building and having to reseal it every ten years um with different methods. They're a little, a little more expensive, but um over the course of ten years, you don't have to reseal the building. So I think, I think overall, it was a really positive report on the building.
Any other questions?
Hey, Bill, while we have the off, the Hoffman guys here, I just thought, I I don't know to what extent you're gonna explore demolishing the rear annex and garage and building new like the town hall. And what would that involve? First of all, I mean, we're gonna basically build a whole new HVAC system. So the mechanicals on on the roof are probably gonna be replaced, Ryan, um and um. But obviously, some of the repair work on the annex and and the garage would go away. That money would go toward a reconstructive, the ri- rear of the building. I, do the Hoffman always have any, any view if you try try to demolish the back and support the original building while you put it, put a brand-new addition on the rear?
I'm not quite sure I understand the 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 question here. Uh, to support the back while the the building is being, the annex is being demolished?
Yeah, I know, I just, I would, uh, obviously, you you've been focused on the existing structure. Many may consider, I'm not sure whether you really plan to, but may consider demolishing that 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 annex and garage and building an entirely new structure in the rear. And uh so the focus, you you're saying the the front of the, the original building, the front is in good condition. Um, the back of the annex is in good condition, but an option would be to really demolish that rear and and start over.
Well, I would assume that a lot of your problems would go away, assuming that the addition would be larger and, you know, cover much, if not all of the back of the building that's painted and and having problems. Yeah, that might, you know, that that that's really where our real concerns lie. Um, even that, and I I don't know that it's not real concerns, it's some things that we could address. I don't think the the building itself, the addition um provides any uh support to the existing building. Usually, if you build a building, you have to, you have to build to make sure that it doesn't uh affect the the existing building. I'm sure they might have taken out, you know, columns or supports at that interface that would have to stay in place. But I I I don't see how that would really affect the main building otherwise.
Yeah, I I didn't, I I just wanna hear you say that.
Any other questions for Hoffman? I mean, let's face it, uh, um, it is the foundation. If we'd tried to refurbish as new, that this building is, uh, the bones of this building are excellent. And uh so I wanted to be able to uh make sure we have an opportunity to ask these guys any questions that uh that you have. Anything else? All right, thank you, guys. Much uh, much appreciated.
All right, it was a real pleasure. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gil. All right, take care of one.
Item six on the agenda is an update from uh for Brian.
Good to see everybody again. Uh, I think I just, since we just listened to the Hoffman report, I think I'll start just by dovetailing some of our findings versus their findings. And I I know that they included some costs uh within their report. Uh, we did review the report and and Hoffman is a reputable firm that we have worked with in the past. We've known, uh, we've actually recommended them to to New Canaan. If you wanted to do this uh deeper dive into the exterior. So we welcomed their uh involvement, uh and we had recommended them as as a firm to go to just for that purpose. Uh, when you reviewed the recommendations and you reviewed the findings, there wasn't anything in the report that we were not aware of. Uh, I think all of the items that were addressed and and the way they addressed them were included within our original cost estimate. Uh, and some to a larger degree, such as windows. I think they just had a cost to replace one window. Where all, our cost estimate includes the cost to replace all windows. So we have a much larger number for replacement of windows than you'd see in the Hoffman report.
Uh, if you interrupt for for that one for one second, um, just Hoffman scope didn't include the windows? And they understood that they're all being essentially all being replaced as part of your scope and budget.
Correct, and I saw that they added that just because it was an observation. Uh, the masonry number that they had in the uh three hundred-some thousand dollars in masonry repair uh was comparable to the number that we were carrying within our estimate. Um, railings, yes, we were replacing railings just because we had to bring them up to code. And the foundation and waterproofing was was the same technique that we were anticipating. Uh, they mentioned footing drains. We are putting footing drains and footing drains are within our estimate, because we can daylight those drains. But when the uh, when the building turns the corner, the grade drops off. So we're able to easily daylight those footing drains and add those uh footing drains to part of the foundation repair. So we were really dovetailing our anticipated scope with the findings that were were outlined within the report. Um, we have been asked to uh give you a little summary of where we were and when we last left you. And how we can then uh bring you up to speed. And let me uh let me get another screen. See if I can share this. Okay, where's my screen? Any questions on that between the Hoffman report and our in our report?
Just to be clear, um, so Brian, you're essentially saying most of the seven fifty that they specify is already in your your plan? Your numbers.
Yes, yes, I would say all of the seven fifty.
Yeah.
Um, and plus, plus some is within our our cost estimates that we had earlier. I see it on my screen, but I'm not seeing it in the share. Let's see.
Do, is Brian a co-host?
Brian's a co-host.
Yes.
Hey, Brian, I may be jumping a gun on this, but um do you have a s- and do you have a sense from when you first put together the cost proposals, given the inflation with regards to materials and labor is, have you revisited that?
We have. That's a good point that I I wanted to just uh make at the end of this presentation.
Uh, I'll hold, sir. Okay, thanks.
Brian, your 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 presentation appeared for just a few seconds and then disappeared.
Oh, please tell me, um. Can you see it now?
Yep, yes, now it's back.
Oh, excellent. I don't know how that happened, but, okay, so so this presentation is short uh because we boiled it down to really just the essentials. I didn't wanna get into a lot of the details that have been done before, but this was our September twenty-ninth slides. So I went back to Sep- September twenty-ninth, when we talked to you last, and then updated it to March thirty-first. The uh as far as the timeline, I understand that since the September presentation, the renovate while occupied is is really not a consideration that the town is is wanting to incur. So we've really eliminated one of the options since September. And now I'm just concentrating on the option to renovate while vacated. And then the option to demolish the building and build new. And so we still had those two uh options since July of last year.
I actually, I actually thought there was another consideration that you're not displaying, which is dis- uh destroy only the annex, demolish only the annex.
That was, that was discussed. Uh, it's not part of this presentation, but we haven't done any detailed cost estimate on that other than it's in between these two options as far as cost. Now, we did talk about taking the annex off, taking the garage off. Um, but the two that we have since September is the A-two, which was add the physical training, add the carport, it still included a range, and then it was renovated as new for the existing building. The upper floor was administrative and detective bureau. It had video simulation training. It had defensive tactics training. The main floor was some uh public spaces in the front and semi-public for emergency operations center and a training classroom. The dispatch center was really receiving no scope. Uh, the records was staying where it is currently. The upper right in the yellow is their IT and data. And then the area in the back was the renovated annex. We were anticipating the the annex to remain, the paint to be removed, the the exterior brick to be restored uh and repointed where as needed. The spalled areas would be repaired, the garage would remain, but then there would be an outdoor patio, outdoor space uh off of the main level for a patio. Uh, the lower level was still a improved Sally port. We widened the doors to the Sally port, increased the area that's being currently utilized as a Sally port. We had couple containment areas which were wire mesh containment within the space. But the the single bay Sally port would be supplemented with the bays in the garage, which we have. Three bays in the garage for uh vehicles, a vehicle storage or vehicle processing. The Sally port would lead into a totally renovated prisoner processing area and all your cells would be new. Brought up to current standards and uh current standards for suicide prevention for all of your detention areas. The blue areas were locker rooms, the male locker room was at the lower part of the plan. And for this plan, we have incorporated a a renovated and expanded female locker room. We had talked about female locker quantities and locker counts, and we had presented a plan with ten lockers for females. This has been increased to thirteen uh within the same space that we had the ten, we've we've accommodated thirteen. Female lockers, we still have the cert storage, and we still have the new physical training room. The area in green is your, all of your evidence being handled and stored according to accreditation standards. For processing, receiving, storage uh and handling. So that's all centralized into one space, it meets accreditation. So the. What you're gonna get with A two is an improved uh function and efficiency in the building. We do relocate everybody in all functions for eighteen months. We do anticipate the need for fifteen thousand square feet of relocation, and we thought ten thousand of that was through the town. Five thousand was still an unknown location, but there may be. Uh, options for the five thousand square feet within the town. That has to be further explored. So there's no real solution other than we're getting them off site. And then we saw Owen Park is a possible option for the majority of it. There may be other options that that have come up also that could be options. The dispatch center would move to Darien for eighteen months, and the prisoner processing and holding would be handled at Darien for eighteen months. We include the fit out of temporary space and relocation and moving expenses is is within our budget. Uh, we resolved all the construction related items, this is what we talked about with the Hoffman report. But we have also included asbestos abatement into our numbers because that was uh reviewed. And a budget was was given to us for for abatement of everything that was identified as hazardous materials.
Who gave you that budget? I'm sorry, who who gave you that budget?
It was through uh Joe.
Okay.
The budget was done through through our consultant.
Okay, thank you.
The construction duration was fourteen to fifteen months, uh, the firearms training range was a separate facility. It did add a covered parking for eighteen vehicles.
There is a battery now, like, worried on my foot.
She goes, music.
She says, she's like itchy and. It was itchy bomb.
Someone is wrong mute.
Mike, can you mute Mike? Mike Morrow.
I accidentally came back with that. I don't know how bad or.
Mike Morrow, Mike Morrow, can you mute?
Mine's like the skin start killing off, so maybe it really is one of those, but.
Can someone mute Mike Morrow?
She had a great time with me, like, it was really needed, but like.
Can can the leader mute everybody just for now?
Okay, now I I think I'm unmuted, so does everybody can hear me now? Yes, yes, good. So we have access control for the fleet vehicles. Uh, option B, what are the, what are the components of option, option B? It's still providing an efficient plan, we could gain some more efficiency in the plan. Uh, it's a new exterior envelope, uh, so it would be all constructed to to uh standards for new construction. We do have the ability to change the architectural expression, uh, we don't need to do that. But a new building would give us an opportunity to change the architecture. We did base this on thirty thousand square feet, and the thirty thousand square feet includes a firearms training range. So I just wanted to make that point. Uh, the relocation is still eighteen months. We have the same need for temporary space. We still would be using Darien for uh certain functions. We have the cost to fit out and relocate within the budget. Uh, still resolving the construction related items because it would be demolished and build new. The duration of this project would go up to sixteen to eighteen months, and it would still include parking for vehicles. And access control for the fleet. So where we were in July twenty eighth of twenty twenty one is we had given you this chart. This was an Excel spreadsheet, uh, it included the hard costs, soft costs, relocation costs and contingencies. You had a project total. Amy's point is well taken, and I revisited, revisited the project with our cost estimator. To say what's happened uh in the last year, and what do we predict in the next year? Uh, some of the same pressures on construction are still out there. Even though we think COVID is gone, uh, it's not completely gone and and it's it's still impacting. Construction as far as supply and labor. So there's that, there's fuel prices, there's unrest, there's inflation, there's, there's a lot of factors. Well, our cost estimator can't be exact, he was recommending between five and ten percent increase in our pricing. Since the last numbers that we gave you was anticipating construction start in the spring of twenty two. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, so we have escalated this now until the spring of twenty three. And use the average of seven point five percent of, we use the number between five and ten. All of the other estimates are still valid, the scope really didn't change. The only thing I've added to this was a, the the line at the bottom where the only thing I took out was the range. And I didn't say this to promote anything, I just did this to show you how the number might change. If you want to go ahead with the range number in, we've given you the hard costs of the range. But what this does factor for you is the hard costs plus the escalation plus the the contingencies. All the way through the end of the project. So just removing the cost from the hard costs isn't giving you the true number with all the escalation factors.
So, hey, Brian, just so I understand that, so um looking at option two. Renovate while vacated, I see that has a hard cost for the pistol range. Mm-hmm. So those high and low estimates you have, that would be uh, is that, is that a fair comparison against option B? It incorporates most of the pistol range expense, but not all, I'm just trying to understand the.
Well, option B includes thirty thousand square feet, new construction including a range.
Right, yeah, but option, option A two, I see that the heart, it has under pistol range at two point five million dollar costs. So.
Two point three, two point three five nine.
Three five nine, excuse me, yeah, so that's in, right.
Two point three five nine is within the eighteen eight.
The the, it's it's within the what, the?
The eighteen eight seventy three for the option B. So it's, it's, it's within the eighteen eight, but it's done as new construction within thirty thousand square feet. It doesn't have the same identical equipment costs for the range, but obviously the hard costs would be different because it's part of new construction. The hard costs that you see as part of option A two was a separate building. It's a separate building away from the existing building. We've included the cost of the construction within option B hard costs, and we've also maintained the range equipment costs within the eighteen eight.
Um, Brian, does your option B have the range on the third floor? Is the top floor, is that where it is in the, in the new?
Penny, we haven't designed that. The the thirty thousand square feet has never been designed or there's never been floor plans. That have been presented. On what goes where, you have an option, a new construction, it could be in the basement. It could be on the third floor, it's gonna be one of the other. And and probably in our past experience, we have put them on the upper floor just because the range equipment needs to go near the range. And the range equipment then goes on the roof. We did that in Danbury, um, we've done that in Darien. That's why we put the range on the upper floor because on top of the range is the mechanical equipment. But in Stanford, we put the range in the basement and we drove the duck work all the way through the building. Down and then back up through to the roof, so in Stanford it is in the lower level.
So that would just be a lengthy discussion about where we would want it if we decided to pursue that option.
Right, and and what we have then for totals. Is the project with the range building within it with the esca- added escalation for another twelve months. Is a project between seventeen point three and nineteen point three million, that's taking the lows and the highs for the soft costs and contingencies. The new building is a twenty eight to thirty one million dollar endeavor, including the range costs. And then if you were not to include the range within your hard costs, the project goes to fourteen to fifteen six. So that's where you can find the true delta between doing a separate range and not doing separate range. And how it affects your overall project costs. Now Stuart brought up the one about tearing down the annex and building back the annex. I think the, in my opinion, the annex is providing the square footage that you need, uh, and the square footage that's required by the the space needs assessment. The exterior uh can be addressed. The roof would be new, uh, because we will have new mechanicals on the roof and skylights, uh, and we would be re-roofing that. That that's within our cost estimate is complete re-roofing and waterproofing repairs. Yes, we will still be putting a sealer on that back building, because as Hoffman said, you're not gonna get a hundred percent of that paint off. So we will be putting a sealer on once the uh, the the paint's been removed, we'll reseal that. But I feel confident with the life of that, it's a sealer though, it would have to be reapplied every seven to ten years.
Brian, uh, this Jim, uh, there's several people that probably have to break off soon and uh, including myself. Let's see if we have any questions on this. As Brian hasn't pointed out, that the, there is one other difference of of the option. A new building has not been designed and therefore the this construction would be farther out. Whereas uh the renovate is new in the existing, which provides uh all the square footage that's required. Uh, could start much sooner in the, you know, because the design is closer to being done. And probably could get construction documents within six months or or six or eight months and. Be ready to have some construction even started possibly this year.
I have one point and one question, uh. For transitional space, uh, we are looking at potentially using the current board of uh. Uh, school board administration building that's being rented, that's just a, you know, people are just looking at it, but that is a potential uh for for transition space. Uh, the question for Brian has to do with, um, if uh the training center range is removed from the back. What other use would you put back there? What, just from a back of the envelope, quick cursory glance of what could be done with it, would it be better parking? Would it be uh, uh, what, a big fountain, I mean, what would, what would you put back there?
Would maintain it just as it is, you don't really have an opportunity to expand parking because of the slope in the grade. I think you've maximized your parking, uh, and and really it's how to use the the grade change. If there's another requirement for storage, that range building could become a storage building. But that's about the shape of what you could put there.
Um, Brian, I had a question in looking at the plans about what the connection is between the new locker room. And uh that you're adding on the lower level, are you breaking that through, is that a wall, how are you, what's your? How is that connected and is that a movable wall? Like, if you want, if we wanted to make that um, a little bit bigger to add storage or something like that, I'm I'm just not. How how does that fit with the current building?
Are you talking about the male locker room or the female locker room?
I'm talking about the female locker room and then the the physical training that which is the new space next to it. How are those being, is that integral, is that a wall, a movable wall between the two?
No, this is a bearing wall that we have at the annex. So this is one of the walls that has some masonry spalling. That we would, we would actually be covering that, and we would be eliminating any water getting to that wall, but it is a bearing wall. We are building really a four-sided masonry box, and you can see the fourth wall is a support wall. For the physical training room for a new structure, new roof. So we're not relying on the existing wall for any additional bearing, but it has to remain. We could put openings in the wall if we put new structure to add openings. It's easier to go to the left because the left side, we do not have bearing walls. So if there's expansion, further expansion needed for the female locker room. The wall between quartermaster storage and cert storage, that is not a bearing wall. So you have the ability to expand into adjacent spaces to the left.
And could you make the physical training slightly bigger to to provide a place for the cert and the quartermaster storage?
Uh, we, we do have to be concerned with some vehicular circulation through the site. We would, we could make it slightly larger, but not to the degree of of cert storage. And we'd have to reduce the size of physical training to add these two functions. We do have vehicles that that are turning the corner out on this, on this site. We're building it in a similar manner, you can see the double wall at the garage. Uh, we did a similar four-sided box for the garage and leaving the bearing wall at the Sally port. And that's what that little space is between the two walls. So we could get the new walls down to bearing.
Ryan, on that point, could, if you could just stop for a second, the the Sally port as existing is kind of inadequate as being a one drive-in Sally port. Could you conceivably think of taking the garage, which is largely vehicle storage and vehicle maintenance and and storage? And make that a a a more adequate selling port, since it's immediately adjacent to the, to the cell block? And then use this, the current Sally port for the, for the vehicle storage and um and storage. Or perhaps even think about, to the extent you need more storage for vehicles, go back to your, what you just referred to as as another building in back. Smaller building than what a range would have been, because it doesn't have to be that large.
Correct.
Could you make a better Sally port out of the garage?
One of the cons, one of the initial concerns is the garage elevation, the floor elevation of this garage is much higher. Than the prisoner processing area in Sally port, because we have grade that that drops along the building. Uh, taking the garage out, we would then add a bay next to the Sally port. But we'd have to then excavate down into the look, the uh, the grade that's there, so if.
What, is that because you can't go down a step or two?
You really don't want to transport prisoners up and downstairs, uh, ramp is okay.
How, how much, what type of difference in height are we talking about, like twelve inches?
Uh, this bay, I would guess the bay that you see my, my pointer is at. That bay, I would guess is about four feet above.
Oh, a lot, okay.
Sally port.
Okay, that's the answer, there obviously is a ramp in the current uh holding cell area, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a ramp and stairs between the Sally port and we could ramp up, but you don't really want to be. the Sallyport and we could ramp up, but you don't really want to be transporting through through steps if you can help that. We have increased the width on the Sallyport door. I understand that it's a one bay drive-in back out and and drive-throughs are preferred. It's just a tough site, even if you were to build new construction. Because of the site constraints, I'm hesitant to say you're going to accomplish a drive-through condition. Even with new construction. It it gets to be a Darien solution all over again, tight site, Darien has drive-in back out versus drive-through.
And Brian, I take it that the corridor and vestibule with the exits on the lower level is like an extra exit that's required by code?
Yes, it is. Yes. That is correct.
Any other questions for Brian? Penny, you have some more questions?
Well, no, I'm just, all I want to do is say in our process as we move forward, I mean, I think Brian has done terrific work for us and I really appreciate it, but we've all, we've all been about, you know, the the different options at the higher level, you know, build new, tear off part of the building, renovate as new. So if if we decide obviously if we decide to go with the new building, we'd have a lot of discussion about the floor plan because that's never been done. But if we decided to go with the renovate in place, I think we just need to build in a little bit of time for us really to go into the these floor plans in more detail to discuss them. Uh, we, I, if, until we go into, we know it will work, but um, I think we just want to have some discussion about exactly where we're drawing all the lines for all the different functions and make certain that that's part of our process.
Exactly, and not just for the voting committee, but even more importantly for the police department who are going to be utilizing this space and Kevin brought up the good point about the Sallyport, that's certainly been a point of discussion that, uh, you know, we want to explore to make sure that the police feel very good and comfortable with the Sallyport design as as finally reapply. Very good point, Penny.
I think that's a good point, too. These are schematics. This is just schematic design. With every project to go through schematic design, design development, construction documents, there's, there's a lot of decision making that still has to be made on this as far as finishes, level of finishes. Uh, all of that has been assumed in our cost estimate, but final decisions have not been made at a schematic design level.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brian? And Brian?
I can forward this presentation to Joe, uh, so so he can have it if you want to have it for your committee.
Yes, please. Thank you. Uh, Brian, I'd ask you to, uh, to, uh, you know, leave the meeting right now, we're going to be talking about next steps and stuff like that, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bill, I, I just want to also underscore what Penny just said, which was, I, I think it's vital that, uh, the the schematic is reviewed by each department within the police department to be absolutely sure that we've, we've captured their needs. And and I know Brian has done this hundreds of times, I'm sure he's extraordinarily competent, I'm, I just want to make sure that we've got, for example, he talks about having a bay where we bring in uh, cars that are being evaluated from a, from a, you know, maybe who knows, a drug bust of some sort. But that bay is in fact today is used for all the dirty workspace of the police department, i.e. barriers and cones and things of that nature. So, you know, he describes it as being a garage that's useful, but it's not useful. And we need to go through each department and look at every single space and evaluate them as we go.
That's an excellent point, Stuart, and and it's a must. I mean, let's face it. If if we don't, if we, if we do a poor job with that, then what have we, then what have we accomplished really? So it's, it's, it's absolutely vital and and it's a big part of what our next steps will be. So as we, as we look at, you know, agenda of eight next steps, we, you know, clearly, uh, the elected bodies are are going to be coming around to to focus on us again. And we want to make sure that the, it's not the building committee that's, that's holding things up. So we have a couple of directions that, you know, that we, that we can go in. One of which would be to put out some kind of a request for architectural services. And you know, and some decisions about, you know, or some decisions about how we will make decisions about architects that are, that are chosen, whether we feel good just putting it out to Castle Booze, Jakunski Humes, or whether we want to open it up to to other architects, you know, Westport, Wilton are using that text, if I'm even pronouncing that properly, and I don't know what our views are of them. But these are things that I would like to to get moving on so that we don't start skipping on the important aspect of fine tuning the final design as as presented to us.
So Bill, you know, the the big question out here, since the location has been resolved, is the renovate inclusive and exactly what Paul and other people saying, with a resolution on a range someplace, you know, not, not okay, so that, that, so and versus build new, build new. Of course, there's a, there's a lot of things involved with it, including timing on it. So in terms of how we move forward, we kind of need direction if there is consensus for people, if the delta is comfortably, I think the delta is like ten million is right, but but we just, because people, you know, people have expressed concerns going, you know, I like where it is, I'm a little worried about no building, do we feel that um, we need to bring people up to speed about the analysis on the building and that it's strong and that we do think we'll get to a building that has very long life. People still may think you want to do differently. I think we just need uh, direction on which way the town bodies want to proceed on that before. You know, you you get into the, the area by area consideration as Stuart and Penny talked about of from schematic design to actual design, right? I mean, we just, we just need, we just need to go this way or go that way from people, right?
Amy, perhaps it ought to be a presentation maybe to a joint meeting.
Right.
Maybe a joint meeting for another purpose, we could, could be, and on the issue of renovate the current building or versus should be a building, a whole new building there and have that resolved in the next two weeks.
Yeah, I, I just think we need, we need to have a path, right? So and and within that path, I think is, you know, I think Mike was mentioning it and we certainly paid attention to the board finance. You know, if we are working with the existing building and we do have you know, a roof that's good now, but we, we need to make sure that people are cognizant of the fixed uh, future maintenance expenses, which any building is going to have, a new building will just have it down the road more. And I just think, Kevin, I think a good example of that is like Town Hall. When they redid it, we didn't do the steps and all of a sudden we have to do the steps going forward. So I just think we, we need to have a real clear ID, understanding of the costs involved. Whether, you know, building is obviously good for like, you know, you're not going to have anything for five, 10 years. We know we're going to have some things in a shorter cycle, which is fine, you just have to make sure it's in the capital plan.
You know, the Hoffman people are, are experts in the field and they've given me the comfort at least that renovating a building is not an unwise thing to do. It's, it's a building that'll be there a hundred years from now.
Yeah, Kevin, I agree with you. I just think we need to get, as you mentioned, that information out to people.
Right.
So everybody gets comfortable with it.
So we're going to need some money to hire an architect.
Penny, we have twenty thousand dollars left and
Right, right, but I mean, to, to, but to move forward the project and hire an architect and actually do plans, whether it's for a new building or renovated building. At what point do we want to go to the town bodies and say, I don't, and I don't know what the number is to say, look, this is, you know, we're going to need X million dollars. You know, to actually design this, then we're going to come back with revised uh, cost estimate, you know, when we're ready to build and we'll ask you for the full amount. I mean, that's what, that's the way we've done other projects.
Yeah, the budget has, the budget has seventeen and a half million dollars in it, which the town council talked about last night. They will approve that next Tuesday, I believe. And then we have a project because the town council has approved it. I think we can begin committing tho- those funds, Joe, Tiger. Tiger? We had a little bit of debate last night, whether, whether, I think, we still will bond the project, we'll still do a bond resolution probably by June. Um, but I think I think we can, we, we can begin to spend money with a town council approved project um, on the order of seventeen and a half million dollars, so.
Okay, that's terrific.
Kevin, just so I'm clear, that the seventeen, obviously Brian's number this morning comes closer to twenty million. It, this is, your seventeen million is just a get, get ready, get set, go number or or what's the expectation?
It's the, the project without the range on South Avenue. And realizing we're probably going to have to appropriate money for a range elsewhere in Kanan or jointly with another town.
And and would we not want to have, again, in the interest of Paul Foley's comments earlier, not have the range cost as part of the expectation that we will be spending twenty million on range and building? As soon as you divorce them, don't you then have a totally different dialogue going on amongst the the town bodies?
Well, again, the town council heard last night, it's more likely nineteen, twenty million dollars with the range. So, but we need to get, we need to get moving forward on the renovation project. So I think with, with an improved budget on Tuesday night. And we ought to be going on a parallel track studying what we're going to do about a range. And we have, if we have to do a special appropriation for more money for that, we'll, we'll address that.
Because a range decision is still probably months away because a lot of the discussions involve other communities. And so there are things, you know, we can throw a lot of things on the wall, but it's going to be, you know, a few months, months before a final decision on a range is, is made. Is that fair, Kevin?
Yeah, but I think the options are are really three now, build someplace in it, which we kind of know is two, two and a half, three million dollars. Something with Wilton, just the two of us, or possibly with Darien, but more likely with Wilton. Or this new regional thing, which quite honestly is becoming more attractive because there's just too many participants, it's not going to
Become less attractive.
Yeah, less attractive.
Less attractive.
Guys, I just want to pop in there for a second to play off Amy and Penny's point. So just to be understood, the town council will likely approve seventeen and a half million to bond, okay? And there was quite a discussion last night about what exactly what we, the town is deciding to do with that property prior to actually authorizing the issuance of the bond. So the question Penny was posing, I think, is really important, right? If we need money to engage, you know, architectural firms and other engineering firms or whatever, you know, professional services we need, uh, and we only have two hundred grand right now. There, it sounds to me there's another pot of money that is needed because the bonding money is to me different than kind of this preparatory work to get, you know, stamp plants.
So we addressed that, we, we addressed that, you know, once you authorize a project, we can, we can start spending money in advance of the bonding anticipation.
Yeah, we always, we always like pre-fund a bunch of it with cash and then we reimburse ourselves with bonding.
Yeah, right, no, I appreciate that. What I'm saying, though, is that the discussion last night, the premise was, none of that is being spent until we, until the town council has comfort on what the plan is. So I think that's an important distinction because that was not drawn out last night in that debate, Kevin. I mean, it just was not. The questions were why are we even, you know, authorizing seventeen and a half million and now we're hearing there's not going to be a range and we don't have any actual plans and we're not sure if it's, you know, renovate or stay, you know, renovate or build as new. So and then, you know, people have said, sure, we can kill the resolution if we're not happy with you know, the, 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 the project and we won't issue the bond. So it's important for the town council to understand that again, you want to allocate funds towards that now in, you know, in advance of an actual issuance of the resolution, but the council was very clear last night that they have the authority to kill the bond, issuance of that bond.
We need to have more to the town council then, if there is that kind of confusion.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that was
I think, I think the idea of a joint meeting.
That was the conversation that was had. So Kevin, you were there and that's exactly, you heard people say, oh, we can kill the resolution if we're not happy, okay. So this, that's, that's an issue that needs to be addressed and it's something
Yeah, not happy about what, Mike?
If they don't, they, because no one knows exactly what the plan is yet, right? So to come to the town, the, the elected town body to say, listen, you need to authorize seventeen and a half million dollars for a bond issuance. Uh, and we don't, and and the council's saying, but you know, what is exactly, is it that we're bonding? We understood the point, you know, you have to authorize the bonding so we can move forward and it's the towns, you know, an embodiment of the town's commitment, we will move forward with this project. But the, the, the issue that many of the town council members were saying is saying was, oh, so we just authorizing this and then we're going to get the actual project plan, the design documents, and this is what we're doing. Uh, and if we're, if we're unhappy with that or we have continued questions, we don't, we, we're not obligated to authorize the issuance of the bond. That was the precise discussion last night. So that, that, that's an issue that needs to be, I agree, so the town council can clearly understand monies will begin to be allocated immediately towards all of the work that needs to be done in preparation.
Penny?
So I just want to say that if the I'm not quite sure how it's going to turn out, but if the town council doesn't authorize the seventeen and a half or some degree of money, this committee will not have enough funds to go forward with the design because I, I don't know if you said two hundred thousand or twenty thousand, I, I missed it.
You have four hundred thousand left of the
How much?
More than four hundred thousand dollars left.
But I don't think that's enough to take us through the whole design phase.
I agree.
So
My view is we can start spending ne- next week based upon the town council vote to approve the budget, eight days, ten days after that. So I disagree with Mike.
Right, right. I don't want to slow it down to have a whole other approval.
We want to bring a bond resolution, though, but probably by May or June, so we have an opportunity for referendum. And so now we have the ability to go forward with a project, so.
Yes, so, so Mike, it sounds like it, it's, the discussion's a little circular, right? I mean, and from, you know, board of finance, we thought it was really, really important to have this line item in the budget to show that we are serious, that we got to move forward on this and, you know, had we not, because if we didn't have exact details and didn't put a line item in, the project would stop. I also think from our perspective, we didn't want to put a number too big in because you kind of don't want people like upping their bids because there's a big, you know, number there. So it seems to me that that is, can we say maybe yet another joint meeting so people understand the building, get comfortable with renovate in the building, get comfortable with the town commitment that we're going to figure out this training range and we move forward. I mean, there is a bit of faith going on here in terms of, but you can't on the one hand, you can't like we, you, you can't have every specific at this point. I mean, what we do is we have a sense that this is a major priority for the town and we move forward and we know that the number we put in was possibly a little low intentionally because you don't want to go too high, but if we get together and we have a meeting and we get some resolution on it, we move forward and right now, it seems like if, just from a cost perspective, you know, there's a big delta between building a brand spanking new building and renovating this building and making, committing to get a range resolution for people, so.
Can I suggest, Bill, that you have a plan of meeting for two weeks out for this, this committee? And the, the, the joint meeting, which will, on the playoffs as well as the police department will be three weeks out, so this committee
Right now, we have a, right now, we have a meeting on the Thursday the fourteenth.
Right.
So two weeks out.
Yep. And and in that interim, the police department will go through the, the, the current plan to make sure it meets all their needs.
Uh, yes, and well, the other question really is from an architecture architectural perspective right now, uh, I mean, we've just had the plans from Brian Humes. Are we going to put out a request for engineering or for architectural services to the Castle Booze as, as well?
Why don't we make that decision on the fourteenth?
Okay.
All right, but in the meantime, in the meantime, why don't we really think about that? Because I think an RFP is justified here.
Well, the selectmen could do that on our own if we do it next Tuesday, but I think let's talk about that as to whether we ought to
Well, only because, Kevin, only because, you know, look, we're going to be spending twenty million dollars on this project at the end of the day, something like that. And I think an RFP is certainly justified to get a couple of other perspect- perspectives here, that's all.
Uh, speaking of architects, uh, guys, I don't have any experience with the, the people that Wilton and Westport are using, Tekton. Is that a company or an architectural firm that uh, we would include? Or should we stick with the two people that we have an awful lot of experience with that we know their work and we know the people? Joe, what do you think?
I would, I would just comment that, that we went out for an RFP back in two thousand eighteen and we whittled down the list to these two gentlemen, uh, to these two firms that have been working on the project. Um, and know the project. If you want to invite more um, architectural firms, we can surely, we could surely do that. I just, an open RFP is gonna be add six, six weeks to this process at least. So we have two people that we're comfortable with right now and we've already went out with an RFP. Um, we could have them refresh their quotes in a couple of weeks. Or we could, or we could go the other route and that's just, that's just more time.
This is a building that's gonna last fifty years, okay? Six weeks is nothing, all right? And I would rather do it right the first time and just have a couple other opinions. We may throw those opinions out and come back to Brian, but.
But I think, Paul, what I think what Joe is saying is we can have it to with Castle Booze and, and Jakunski Humes uh, in, in much less time because these two firms have, have already been it and, and we're familiar with it. Um, you know, the six weeks is really for an open, a completely open RFP uh, where uh, we'll be getting all kinds of uh, responses. Is that fair, Joe?
Hey, Paul, these, these two are the lead two public safety firms in the northeast. I think, you know, we'll do well to be with either one of them, but I, I don't think we should open it up further.
Okay, but then why did Wilton and Westport, you know, choose somebody else? I mean, I just don't know the answer.
Well, Wilton is trying to build a building on the cheap. They're, they're planning a sixteen point seven million dollar building and uh, I don't know what Westport, Westport already had. I don't, what, what is Westport doing? They've got, they've got a police department already, huh?
Yeah, they, they, this is the firm that did it. Yep.
Yeah.
Say that I think we should stick with the two that we have. I think that um, they're, they're leading experts in this field. This is, this is a building that is gonna have so many specialty spaces. And specialty spaces are typically where you get change orders, uh, which are obviously not in the town's interests. And so I would wanna, you know, I want somebody who has done this so many times. And if these are the two leading firms and they're both great architects and I've certainly been impressed with Brian, and I've worked with KBA before, I don't see, we, you know, we're not required to open this up to everybody and I don't see, I think it would just complicate things. Um, I, I think we have two, two great people. Um, I, I wasn't open.
After touring, after touring some of the other police departments that Brian has done and the complaints that we've seen from the people who actually have to occupy the buildings, I, that's why I wanted to open it up to somebody else, whether it was um, Bethel or whether it was Darian or others. Uh, you know, things were put in the wrong places. Um, leaks are still going on in Darian. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm just not pleased with it, that's all.
Hey, Paul, we're not in executive session, so let's.
Well, I'm not pleased with it. I'm not, I'm not.
Uh, could we?
Well.
KBA and Brian, whether they can update their, as Joe suggested, with it, for the meeting on the fourteenth. They probably can.
You know, here's, here's what I would say. If, if we are seriously as a committee, we want to consider both architects. Then what we ought to do is, is bring them both in for, you know, or, or presentations. Cause this building committee has had very little to do with KBA. I mean, I know the town worked with KBA. I've worked with KBA on past projects. But I don't have any level, I don't have a lot, a great level of comfort, you know, with them on this particular project. So if we actually wanna consider their proposals, if the town decides that they wanna go forward, um, and uh, you know, we know whether or not, I think we should know whether or not it's a, a new building or a renovate. Uh, and then we could bring them in and they could make proposals. Otherwise, I don't think we're gonna have much more information.
You know, keep in mind, KBA is a sixty member firm. Brian is about a six member firm and he, he subs out pieces of it to subs. He gets the job done. Maybe a consideration too as to their, both of their schedules is whether they can, you know, get working on this uh.
Well, I think Brian is always committed to us. We'd have to have it. I mean, I think he could do it. I mean, otherwise he wouldn't have been working on this all along. So I, I don't think that would be a.
We did pay both of them. We did pay both, we did pay both of them for their work, so.
I, I would like to, I would like to say in order for me to get new numbers from them, we would, uh, they need to know what they're doing. Again, the circular thing. I can't ask them to build a new building or do that for, for a certain, for a certain fee. So I don't, unless he wanted to have it, you know, as two different options, but that's a whole, that's a whole different game than refreshing their quotes from a couple of years ago for a renovation. And just, you just also note that I think the renovation, the demo and build new is on a completely different uh, timeline from an approval process. So you, you'd have to just take that into consideration. That, that it's, there's an extra year on the project, I, I would, I would guess, but I mean, the, the, the architects would have to tell us.
I, I would think it's. The build new would be an extra year, you believe?
Yeah, I mean, just going through the, the town, the, the town bodies again, going through planning and zoning, I think it's gonna be a much harder lift. It might not be a year. I mean, I, but I can't, I can't with any surety say that we could do it in six months.
So Joe, is it possible to go back to uh, uh, Castle Booze and say, uh, and, and to Brian, right, the two of them and say, please refresh your uh, uh, scope of services and fee proposal for a refurbishment of the current police station on the current site. Is that uh, is that a fair question to these guys and that uh, and that they could come back to us uh, uh, in four weeks if we told them to do that today?
I think they could come back in two weeks if we told them to do that.
Would you expect a schematic from Castle Booze?
They already, they, I mean, they've provided schematics with um, with their previous proposal for the Tobia building. And I mean, I'm sure they could, maybe that might add another, a week or two.
I mean.
A week, we could ask.
Castle Booze has been focused, Castle Booze has been focused on new buildings. I, I'm wondering, I, what I'm asking is whether they would give us a schematic for a renovated building.
Uh, they, they could if we asked them to.
Yeah, Stuart, we're basically calling.
Timeline.
Within the current envelope. This, this is gonna be a new building, basically, within the current envelope.
Yes, but we don't have a schematic from Castle Booze regarding that. I'd love to see it. If that's, if that's within, if, if ever, if others feel the same way, that would be an interesting comparison.
Well, I think we do. I think we want, we want a, a good competition between the two, uh, between the two architecture firms. And we're really discussing now, and I think we have the money in our budget to, to do that right now because the, the, this is certain different than a complete uh, uh, construction drawings and such. And so the question really we're, we're sort of bantering about is what can we, what, what, what is an unreasonable request of Castle Booze to get back to us and what isn't? And um, and therefore so that within the next uh, month, we're just throwing out a, you know, a number, we have uh, something to compare uh, the two firms so that we as a building committee and with the select because they write the check, um, can pick the architecture firm moving forward and get the ball uh, truly rolling. So Joe, could we today, could we today go to Castle Booze and say, and to, and to uh, Jakunski Humes and say, uh, we want uh, refreshing bids of a scope of service and fee proposal?
We, we can. If you, if you want, um, if you want us a schematic design, which Humes was paid for to do for this building, there'd probably be some cost and some, and some time associated to fairly get that from Castle Booze.
Can, can we ask, can we ask KBA to, to, to estimate based upon Brian's plan and whether they would make any changes to it? I mean, I think the police are Brian's plan already.
Well, is, is it, is it Brian's plan proprietary to Brian? I don't think we can steer between architects.
Yeah, I, I'd be skeptical.
Yeah.
I would be annoyed if I was Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Me too.
KBA has to offer. Do in that building. So I mean, the key thing is Leon and John and Andrew are, 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 are satisfied with the configuration of the building. It's basically the same plan as currently with some mi- minor modifications. So.
Yeah, but KBA might have some interesting alternative design too, that, you know, that we would miss.
Right, right.
I mean, if you, if we wanna. To uh, to ask Castle Booze to um, refresh their, and, and provide a schematic or, or not?
They've never done that before, but, but they, they can easily do that. They, they have the capability to do that very quickly. And they, and they're in touch with the market. They're working on other projects in other areas. They know what the costs are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah.
You need a motion.
I mean, the one thing, I just wanna be careful about the process. I think that this is a big project for the town. Um, and I think what, what we wanna do is we wanna pick the architect that we think is gonna give us the best um, product. We, we have two excellent ones. If we do anything with bids, you know, for what their fees for services are gonna be, and then we also want them to show us their concepts for what the building is, which I think Brian has. So we're sort of seeing if, 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 if KBA would do it. I think the bid should be sealed and, and, and the process that I've gone through on other committees is we've looked at it, we've looked at the architects and then we've had the bids sealed, you know, at the end, so that we actually are considering what type of process and product they're gonna give us and, and evaluating that before we open the bid. So anything you do, I think that the, the fees for services should be a separate component sealed at the end.
I agree.
Not that we wouldn't open it, but we, what you don't wanna do is get their presentations and then immediately look at the money. Cause it colors your viewpoint.
Yeah, that's not, the, the, that's, that's not really what's gonna be the dri- driver of the decision. It's the qualifications and their, their recommendations for the project.
Right, I'm just saying procedurally, if Joe's gonna put it out, we oughta, it oughta just ask for the bids to be sealed and we can open them at the time that we want to. It's, wouldn't be, it's not gonna be hard for them. It's just gonna be.
Right.
What we, we, we would do.
It, it sounds like the right protocol.
So could we decide to have these guys, the two architects um, dust off their scope of services and fee proposal that they've submitted uh, back in two thousand and nineteen? Um, and for uh, Brian to have an opportunity to update his uh, plan as he sees fit and to have uh, Castle Booze submit uh, a potential schematic for a refurbished new police station on the current site. Is that? Is that fair? Not including a, a training center? Or firing range. Is that fair?
I don't think, Bill, I don't think you're gonna get a true.
Without paying him.
Schematic without paying them. So.
Because Brian, we paid for that, right?
He's been paid for that. They help, they'll come in and they'll give us their ideas, but they're not gonna.
Thank you. No, I was assuming we were gonna pay him because we, like I said, we have.
I don't know that we wanna pay him on, I, I mean, that, that's, I, I don't know. That might be just throwing money out there.
Well, how much, let me ask, again, it's a big project, big decision for the town, right? What did we pay Brian to do his schematic?
Just twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, I, I, and look, I'm as frugal as the next guy, right? But I mean, there is a chance, as Tiger said, that they might look with this with a whole different eye that we're not seeing. So is it worth, I don't know what their timing would be to do this, obviously. Is it worth to invest that amount of money? If we think they're both good firms, but they might commit it at different angles. I mean, you know, they may, they may completely move around where stuff is within the, within the same um, um, envelope, just.
Amy, I, I think you're, I think you're absolutely right. In fact, let me, let's go to the other extreme. Let's assume that uh, Castle Booze does not provide us a schematic, but does provide us a fee structure. Are we then suggesting that we're gonna take Brian's schematic, hand it over to Castle Booze and hire Castle Booze? You wouldn't do that. So I think it, it has to be, if, if we're gonna have two architects involved, we need to have both of them present their concept of a solution which would include a schematic.
Yeah.
I was assuming we were gonna pay Castle Booze for, for this work. So we have an apples to apples comparison between the two firms. Again, their schematics are just one element of the decision. Um, you know, it's how much of, uh, how good are this, construction managers, et cetera, et cetera. But to, to answer Paul's concerns and, and everyone, you know, the issue, we wanna make sure that we have two good schematics to, to choose from. So I, I was assuming we were gonna pay uh, Castle Booze, I don't know what the number is, twenty grand, to come up with their schematic. Um, and if that can be done within uh, six weeks at the latest, um, you know, we are in a position to, to decide, you know, in six weeks, frankly, to decide, you know, which architect goes, we go with going forward and we give them the green light to start creating construction drawings. Is that?
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Just the schematic. We're gonna make our decision based on.
Right now, it's just for, it's just for schematics to have within, hey, four weeks would be ideal. I don't know, we could ask of them whether it's four weeks, six weeks. But um, is that, is that fair, Joe?
I believe so. Um, and just to clarify, we, we, um, we paid Humes fifteen thousand plus five thousand for estimating. So it would be under fifteen thousand would be.
Yeah, we need to do that, the size of this project. We just have to. I mean, that, that is, you know, I don't know, it's less than a basis points, way less than a basis point, so.
So the selectmen on Tuesday will approve a contract with KBA for.
Thank you, Kevin.
That'd be great.
And, and Bill, I would, I would encourage Castle Booze to give their estimate of cost as well, right? It would, we're not talking about just schematic, but estimate of costs associated with schematic.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let me ask you, in terms of um, having a greater conversation with the greater, the town on this one, um, does it make sense to let Castle Booze come back with um, you know, their schematic and estimates before we go before the town and say, okay, we think approximately renovating in place to be determined, but definite range is this range? I mean, if they come in completely different, uh, you know, in terms of their projections versus go new, which we know is at least a year. But I mean, it's just in terms of timing, in terms of where we wanna bring people up to speed, but also realizing, you know, we, we can also convey the fact there's an urgency in this by, you know, the selectmen's meeting, the update, the Board of Finance, update town council. This is where we are. We're, we're moving forward, you know, cause I think people wanna get moving on this. So we, we don't want people to think we're not doing anything on it, but I wonder if it's too early to just go before people, just with Brian's view of things.
Your, your point is a good one, Amy. I mean, basically to minimize our maximum regret, right? Our maximum regret would be, we got all the, the top bodies all teed up, we gave them uh, our, our, our assumptions. And then all of a sudden, our other uh, paid uh, professionals, KB, let's say, uh, throws in a whole, totally different set of assumptions that we did not present to the town earlier upon which they've made, uh, made some decisions. So that's a, that's a good point.
But we can, we can make sure that people know this is very active process. So people don't think this is back burner. You know, I mean, I think, I think there is concern that, you know, we're, we're ready to go, a lot of people don't know we're ready to go. We're just being judicious before we bring it before everybody to, to make the hundred percent choice.
Let me jump in there, uh, Amy, that's a fantastic point. I mean, the town council's perspective, don't get me wrong, there's, there's unanimity that this project needs to go, it needs to move forward, we'll, you know, we'll approve the bond. Uh, we need to engage it from the town council's perspective. It's, you know, these things needed to be done yesterday. You know, me, not in a bad way, just saying the urgency. We, you know, we want the schematics, we want, they wanted, let me back up. Town council's most important thing they needed to hear was, and now they confirmed, the bill, the police building location will stay where it is. So from this point forward, there's a lot of concern that have been elated. The second thing now is the urgency. Let's bring this project on. We're gonna authorize the bonding, okay? We need the schematics now to be brought forward to the town council because everyone wants to see the plan and get the collective wisdom of, you know, renovate or completely revow and, and build as new. So the quicker we can engage and get the schematics done and have those prevent, you know, have that discussion with the police building committee and then bring that forward to the town bodies. I think that's how it needs to go and it's the quicker the better. That's the temperature on the town council.
Yeah, but and Mike, you're, you're sitting there, so you are able to convey where we're going on this so that people can get comfortable on it, realizing that it's a bit of an iterative process, but the priority, prioritization and um, timeline is moving forward, right? So you can convey that to people.
A hundred percent, and that's why I'm, I'm very encouraged by this conversation because I feel like it's been quite a quantum leap forward and I'll certainly will be doing that.
Yeah.
Um, just a second. Joe, if, if when you're gonna get this proposal from KBA and if we're gonna ask for cost, then I think we need to make certain that we have apples to apples here because you get people estimating things all different ways. So I don't. So I don't, I, I think we actually, I didn't, didn't we have, um, a different cost estimator that Brian used? For the, his project, maybe we'd want KBA to use the same, and if we really want to get serious into costs at this point, I'm. Unless they're going to, I'm not sure that we need to, unless they're proposing a whole different level of change, in which case then we would, would need some costs. But I don't want them to come up with their own costs that are completely different than Brian's. Because even in the, even in the way that they were cost estimating things in the presentations for the new buildings. They were, they had a slightly different process than Brian's. And if we weren't getting exactly apples to apples on it. And so I, I, I'm a little concerned about getting costs that we would make decisions on when they're not being done with the same methodology.
You're absolutely right, Penny, and, and in fact, Joe and I spent a, a couple of days trying to get an apples to apples comparison the last time we went through this. It would be terrific if we could just use the same cost estimator, it would be fabulous if that's possible.
And town like cost estimator to do, because there are all types of escalation things. And it's like where you, what level you, percentage you pick for the escalation. And if there's a range, are you giving the low end of the range, are you giving the high end of the range, or you picking the middle? And we would want to make certain that all the escalation factors were done exactly the same way, otherwise. You know, we're, we're not going to have, I, I actually am not sure unless they completely change the way they're doing the building, we need that new cost estimates. Um, because I, but.
Yeah, well, they just may think that, they may think through the building differently, Penny, you know, I mean, some of like the, the area that, I mean, they just may think it through differently.
Right, right, right.
But we do have, but, but we do have constants, like they should use the same estimate for relocation expense, you know, all those things that, you know, we're going to tell them. We're looking at doing this with nobody in, so those numbers should be constant.
Right, but I, I think it's the escalation factors that were done pretty differently between the two estimates. And so the numbers weren't easy to understand.
Joe, is that a fair, is that a fair ask, when you ask an architect to say we want you to use a particular cost estimator?
Yeah, so we hired the, we hired the cost estimator directly, they, they worked for the town directly. Uh, we can hire them to do the exact same thing for a different architect, so there's no, there's no package deal with them per se.
Okay, and we should expect them to also give us a, once they've estimated the Castle Booze, that they also, uh, give us a spreadsheet that shows Castle Booze versus, uh, Jukinski Humes.
We could have them do a comparison.
Right.
For sure.
Right, okay.
Great.
That sounds fabulous.
Hey, Bill, let me suggest that you and I and Joe call, uh, Chuck Booz this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get, let's get on with it.
Okay.
The one thing that I.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Interrupt for one second, um, the one thing that is not in the equation at this moment that I don't have direction on is the new building on site. It doesn't, I don't have anything that I'm moving forward on that.
Well.
Besides, there's a, a twenty-nine million dollar item.
I think that's, that's, that's going to be ten million dollars more and, and either way.
Yeah, there's been no appetite, I mean, let's face it, there's been no appetite to do more work on that, Joe, it's a fair question, but frankly, in the last three months, I've heard, uh. Zero appetite from anyone, uh, to, to do more work in that regard. I mean, if, if it was, it would have been on this committee to do so, we've got no, uh, once the, the number comes back at an incremental ten million dollars. Once the, the news comes back that the current, uh, envelope, the current building is, is rock solid, there's been very little appetite for it. So I think that's fair, that we don't have to focus the reference there. It's officially not that, but I don't think we as a committee need to do any expedited work in that regard.
No, but, but Bill, I, I would say that I have heard from numerous people that very much want to keep it in place, but despite the additional costs, may really think about doing it. But I think those considerations, uh, may be addressed when we are able to address everybody with the analysis of the building, et cetera, so.
Yes, thank you, Amy, I did, I did overspeak there, you're absolutely right, we, in fact, we have many, we have committee members that are very much in favor of, uh, build as new, so I, I did misspeak.
All right, I'm sorry, I have a appointment, I have the second one I have to go to, are, are we, are there any more decisions we're making today?
No, no, the only other, the only other question that I had was who is driving the range project? If we want these to go on in peril, somebody has to take ownership for the range. I know it may not be.
Leona, John, Dave, Dave Federico.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll see you all later, sorry.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, yeah, thanks to your point, Stuart, absolutely, that range is, uh, it is moving forward, we, uh. We're not going to let that, uh, we're not going to let that get hold of the vine here.
Hey, hey, Bill, can you just summarize next steps? I just want to make sure it sinks, so we don't get this other bit.
Next steps are, Kevin, Joe and I are going to have a little phone call before we reach out to Castle Booze. We're going to ask Castle Booze to update their, uh, their scope of services and fee proposal. And in addition to that, provide us with their schematic, uh, we are likely to pay them, uh, whatever we paid, uh, Jukinski, uh.
Like twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, call it.
Fifteen, fifteen.
But then we'll pay another five for, uh, for estimator, a cost estimator, so that we have apples to apples to compare, uh, two firms that we believe are, uh, the two best for us. Uh, moving forward, so that in four to six weeks, the town bodies, well, the building committee, uh, will be able to, uh, make a final determination of refurbishment building is new. And then we will be able to start, uh, the, the process of deciding which architect we're going to use going forward. And once we decide on the architect, we will be able to, uh, go, go into contract with them to start the construction drawings.
And, and, and Bill, in the, in, in the interim, while we're waiting to get, uh, the second schematics and the, and the cost estimator. Um, selectmen, the board of finance and town council will be able to give each one of those bodies an update on where we are in the process. And the reason that we're not coming forward earlier to discuss build new versus renovate is we're getting one more look. Um, and, and then we will have absolute direction, but that will let people know that, um, there is a priority in this, there's positive forward momentum to get this done.
Right, and the, oh, the other point, Michael, uh, as far as, uh, moving forward, the, uh, training center range is absolutely on the front burner. Um, there is one hundred percent commitment in this community for, uh, a top-notch, uh, training center. And really it's just a question of whether we're going to, uh, partner with another town, and that's been part of the, the process, the sort of the slowing down really, if you will. Because whenever you're dealing with other municipalities, you know, they have to deal with their information as well. Um, and that, uh, we also continue to, uh, look at sites in our town for, uh, not only just a range, uh, for us. But also a range that possibly could be, uh, could be shared with Will.
As you know, the board of finances allocated seventeen million now, so it probably will be twenty. We're going to keep it at seventeen until we have more definitive plans on the range. And so make sure we're all thinking, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
One, one last, one last thing is, I think I'm not going to ask for the actual fee, because we'll get that as a sealed bid when we know what project we have.
Thank you.
Right, that's what Penny was, her direction, that, uh, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
All right, all right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thanks for the two hours, guys, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, bye.